Good pledge. By the legislative citizens of our land, and by the United States of America, including the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Alderman Brimble.
Here.
Alderman.
Here.
Alderman Dunton.
Here.
Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Hope.
Here.
Alderman Stupi.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderman Luzika.
Here.
Mayor, we have a form.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's approved. Have no presentations or awards tonight. Personal appearance?
They would have to be on here if there's nobody.
Nobody here, alright. Martin, your report.
Okay, well, I had the pleasure of meeting Carol Comer, the director, the new director of the Department of National Resources, at a meeting in Perryville. She expressed that it's a new order and that the Department of National Resources is going to be much more business friendly and less, take fewer directions from FEMA, as she said in the past. The federal government has been dictating to the state government what they do and the state government was just going, "Okay." And so, depending on how you feel about regulations, you'll either think that's a good thing or a bad thing. The mayor and I met with Piva to talk about the lease and I think it's something that's suitable for closed session when we talk about the lease amendments. But what we have now is, we have the base lease that was originally approved, and we added on for additional square footage, and then we added on for lighting, and then each of the base lease had changes over the years, and the extra square footage lease had changes. And that's where the thing got messed up, I've discovered, is there was supposed to be an increase in the extra square footage portion of the lease that never happened. And it was just, you know, they didn't do it, and I didn't catch it, and we just, it didn't happen. So anyway, we met with them, and they said, "Could we just like have one document?" And I said, "Yes, and I'll have to meet with the board, and we'll talk about the terms of that, and we'll make a proposal." So we'll have a closed session to discuss that proposal. FEMA visited us regarding our claim for cleanup after the April floods, and everything went, I think, pretty well. Here's the pro sitting next to me on handling FEMA paperwork. And she serves both us and the Levy District in that capacity, and she's very good at what she does. Joy Howard was our financial advisor when we did a couple of times on, since I've been here. And so, she kind of read about the talk about roads and capital improvements and whatever, so she visited with us to discuss options on funding road projects. And depending on what we decide down the road on these capital improvements, she offered to come to a work session and discuss those options, and we'll probably take her up on it once we get to that point. Finally, I met, what is group homes? I met with the two contractors that are proposing to bid our overlay work today. A good meeting. We all went out, Gary went with us to look at the roads. Everybody agreed on what they would do and every little situation, what needed to be built and what didn't, and so when they present their bids, they would be bidding exactly the same work. And finally, there was a communication regarding our ordinance that limits the location of group homes, and Marx is more aware of this than I am. In our ordinance, you have to be 2,500 feet apart from group homes, and apparently that exceeds some generally accepted standard at the federal level. And so, potentially, we could, you know, somebody came to us and said, "We want to locate a group home," and we said, "No, relying on that ordinance, it could be challenged." Apparently, 1,000 feet is kind of the standard, and the proposal is, they'll leave us alone if we change our ordinance to 1,000 feet. This is not an issue for us. We don't have any proposals. I haven't, not aware of one having been made. But the question is, should I present to you a resolution or an ordinance amending our city codes to that lesser 1,000-foot standard? Do you want to explain kind of?
Yeah, so the Housing and Urban Development San Luis office has been going through municipal ordinances in cities across this area, and they're contacting cities periodically to see if this arises with another, with two other clients. They were a lot more aggressive prior to the November election than they are now with you guys. They were more threatening to take some sort of action. So the issue is, there are certain federal regulations with regard to, and certain civil rights issues with regard to permitting group homes. So the federal government really had, and still has some interest in making sure that cities aren't discriminating against group homes unnecessarily. And so what they want is for cities to treat group homes, and group homes are defined as a residential building that people live there as their residents, but they're not related by blood or marriage. So generally, you're talking about people with disabilities, smaller group homes is what we're talking about, generally. And so they don't, they want those group homes to be treated the same as a single-family residence for zoning purposes. However, they also have a directive, they don't want what they call clustering. They don't want you to zone them into an area, and so that's your group home area, because that doesn't, they want to essentially integrate the, you know, people that have disabilities within the rest of the community. So they have, the federal government has two conflicting goals. One is to, is that you don't discriminate against them, so you're keeping them out or away from each other, but they don't want you to allow them to be right next to each other either. So, like I said, they were less cooperative before. I've talked to the same investigators, same actual individual, about your ordinance and his position now is not, "Hey, you need to change it or else." Now it's, "Well, we think that you need to change it, because if you have a problem in your city, you may run afoul and end up in litigation. We're just trying to help you out to avoid any problems." So, but in any event, right now, the restriction at issue is keeping any group homes, they have to be at least 2,500 feet away from another group home. And I don't even know if you even have any group homes that are defined in the code.
Well, I'm not sure. We have group homes.
Yeah.
But they're generally care facilities.
Right, so that'd be a nursing, nursing home is supposed to be a group home?
No.
You do have group homes, okay.
Across the street from each other.
But they're not like a halfway house.
Right.
Or a drug.
Right.
We have center, or whether elderly or otherwise disabled people who live in these groups.
So anyway, so I'm going to draft revision of the ordinance, just changing the restriction from 2,500 to 1,000 feet. They would not assure us that that would be in compliance, because they're making no guarantees of what their position is going to be. And so they're, this realm, I'm dealing with, they're very standoffish as far as making any assurances that we're doing what we want them to do, and they're not saying they're going to do anything to us, we take no action whatsoever. They're just saying, they're sending the same form letter to us, which looks like it's very threatening when it comes down to it. They're just saying, "You might want to look at this, you don't run into some developer of a group home suing you." So I don't have any problem with reducing it to 1,000 feet.
So they're saying, "No, that we can put a group home in a single-family residential area."
That's right. That's right. Yeah. Group home is defined, I'll have to take a look at your code, because I haven't done the work in the ordinance. I'm assuming there's a limit on the number of people who are defined as a group home, so. So we'll present that at a future meeting.
So is a group home defined as a single structure?
Well, I have to look at your code, quite frankly, and I'm just dealing with this investigator to find out what their position is before I even looked at your code, so I'm going to have a proposal for you. But the bottom line is, they're sending out these letters, and they're not following up on them anymore. Before, he'd be calling me up, saying, "When are you going to adopt this change?" And that, so it's just a kind of different attitude, and it's something that they came on to. You know, can you think, you sent a letter to, I don't know if it went to you or Mr. Elbers?
Elbers, I hadn't heard of him.
Correct, it was Elbers, and so he gave me the file, and I followed up.
We'll take care of it.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Martin, thank you. Kenny?
Good evening, once again. Should I have the board franken? We had a little bit slower month this month for change. We had 20, 25 calls, and we only actually had 10. Some of the guys were actually joking, wondering if their pages still work anymore.
It was a little slower on calls. We had quite a few PRs, especially around the county fair, doing standbys and helping with the parade, things like that. I'll usually bring to your attention the firefighter of the month. This month, we also have him sitting here at the firehouse, at the city hall, Gary Roth. He's been with us for, going on his 26th year now. One other thing I forgot to put on here, Buck was there. On July 30th, we had a little picnic at the firehouse, and what we did, we've been in that building for a little over 10 years now, so we invited some of our past firefighters to come back and have a picnic with us, and we got a chance to show them around the firehouse. And I opened the invitation again, that even though they're no longer on the roster, they're still welcome anytime, come in. Some of the guys had never seen the trucks, some of the guys had never seen the building, and we had a real good time, had a good response on it. So it was, it was nice to see some of the old guys, and I'm hoping to get some of them back around and tell some of the stories of some of the things we used to do and some of the way it used to be.
Good old days.
Pardon? Parts of it. Halloween night, we used to gather down at the firehouse for meals, because there was somebody always setting TVs and furniture and putting stuff on fire.
We kind of got away from that tradition, so we brought that back last year, too. Actually, because we had the Ranger last year on Halloween, I gave a guy, a couple of guys, some candy, and sent them up in rosary edition, and got out in the public and started getting around with them again.
That's awesome.
So we're trying to get things where guys are starting to come back in and enjoy being at the firehouse, instead of feeling like they have to go out for it, is what I'm shooting for.
Great.
Any questions on my report?
Just, I guess that might be just kind of ramp. Didn't we decide at the, at the last meeting to put a fire truck back on the agenda?
Well, we were looking in.
We were waiting on the core engineering.
Waiting on the core, right? I thought we decided we didn't care.
You and I decided that.
I decided that as well.
John decided that, but we were the only three that decided that. Buck decided that also.
Oh, is that what we voted on?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Okay. All right. Well, I sure hope the core don't be typical core, and we're sitting here waiting a year for that.
Well, I don't worry. I think we have set a timeline.
That's, I agree with that. We're not going to wait.
Wasn't it the end of September, though?
No, it wasn't.
Yeah, they're supposed to, actually, they're supposed to finish before the end of their fiscal year, which would be October first, so it has to be at the end of September. They're working on it. Guy sent me an email today, wanted to know whether we had the right to cross the railroad track, the road going up to the pump station, wanting documentation of that right.
Good luck with that.
Yeah, anybody remember that?
Kenny?
I think you've done a fine job.
Thanks, Kenny.
Thank you, Kenny.
Gary, keep it back there.
Good evening.
The report starts out the same.
We mowed, we sprayed weeds, we weed eded. We did a little cleanup project around the skateboard park. Had a pavilion down there, we put rock in on there, some landscape timbers, moved a picnic table in, fixed the drinking fountain. There's been a lot of kids recently using that area, so. We had a couple of trees fall behind the water plant onto the neighbor's property, and so we got them out of there and all cleaned back up. And at the same time, while we had to rent a lift, we did some work on the upper side of the memorial cemetery, had some issue with some trees. We did some repair work on the storm drain of Valley Spring, got the soccer fields ready to go, put up all the nets, and sprayed the lines. We got all the lines downtown painted for school in Jurdifet, and the spray machine we purchased a few months ago made a world of difference. The center section out here, we'd take better than a half a day to paint, and we did it in our half, so. And we're getting ready for downtown for Jurdifet. And the park board, one of the things they had me working on was water to the dog park. I didn't do it. Steve and his guys did get the water put in there last week, so.
Did you create something?
Not yet, I still got to make a.
Create a bowl that's porous, so it'll hold water long enough that dogs drink, but after they turn it off, it'll just sink down, so you don't have standing water for eating mosquitoes.
Yeah. You know, we have a lot of other hydrants around that we don't have, you know, they're up by the basketball court, by Core League Field, the soccer fields, and we don't have an issue with them. Not homeward now.
Anything else?
Gary, I got a couple of questions.
Okay.
Where are we on street repairs? When are we going to start doing some of that? Is there a timeline about when you think you're going to start doing these things?
Once we get past this weekend, next week, we're going to have more time to get on there.
And start patching and stuff? Okay, good.
He's done some of them.
We've done, we've done some. But that's the plan.
Yeah, and that tide, the grass should slow down a little bit, a little bit. One other thing that just bothers the hell out of me is that pond in the park. I know, if we can't get it to look any better than that, we might as well just drain it.
Well, I don't know, it's just an issue of draining it. I mean, it's going to fill back up as it rains.
Well, why can't we do anything to make it look? I thought we were going to put some kind of chemical in there that would take care of that.
Well, there has to be a dry spell in order for that to work. Every time that I've had the chance to do it, it's raining, and when we hit a dry spell or on other, but I will make sure, make a point to get it done.
I didn't know you had to have a dry spell.
So it don't turn the water. You know, once it rains, it turns it. Push that asphalt down rather than keep it up on the moss.
Oh, okay, all right. That's the only two questions I have. Everything else, I think is great.
Anything else?
I'll get with you about some trees.
Yeah, we got, we got tree limbs for the buses.
Yeah. We're hitting them today, we're driving away.
We have a, kind of a good question. Some property owners have trees and limbs from which come out over the road, and they're low enough that they're tapping at. We have an ordinance that allows us to order them to cut those down. Problem is, most people don't have the equipment to do that. You'd have to hire a contractor, whatever. We haven't been vigorous about enforcing that. We have one, particular one now, that just needs, something needs to be done with it. So you might be hearing a scream when I tell these people they have to cut their trees.
Are you talking about sight distance issues?
No.
Oh.
Clearance.
Clearance issues. Because I know some intersections, you've got to pull out in the street.
Well, there is sight distance, you've got to be able to see, there's a triangle, a sight triangle, you've got to keep clear of the.
Well, there's one I need to talk to you about, 161, it's making it very difficult.
There's a few of them around here.
Well, call them in.
Okay.
The one you're talking about on Chadwell?
Yeah, it's in Campbellville, too.
There's one there, too.
Yeah.
It's getting kind of.
Send me this.
Grown over.
Send me the email, call in a list, and we'll start working on it.
Yeah, 61, yes.
At the end of 61.
At the Chadwell, 61.
The sight distance.
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, Gary.
Yeah, yeah.
Hello?
Hello. Hi, Carol.
All right, so you have my staff report in front of you, what has gone on, you know, through the month of July. The only two, you know, things that I just wanted to bring up was, one, I wanted to find out about if it was okay to pursue, considering an amendment to the chicken ordinance. We don't have, we don't have very many chicken permits. However, with the growing popularity of chicken tractors, one, one portion of the ordinance states that the hardware cloth must be buried 12 inches to keep anything from digging underneath. So it's really difficult to have a chicken tractor where you could move it from, you know, to another area to make it work.
Uninitiated, like, eat, what's a chicken tractor?
It's a, it's a pin that you can move, so that, it's got wheels on it, and you can move it so that the chickens don't completely destroy the grass and everything.
Like a little portable pin.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so.
Thanks for clarifying, because I was wondering that myself. Chicken drive-in tractor.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Visual of a.
Hey, John.
Good small.
So if it's okay, I'd like to, you know, bring a, an amendment next month.
I think that's fantastic.
Okay. The only other thing, then, is I would like to request permission from the board to, to move forward gathering information for a public nuisance hearing for 164 Jefferson Street.
Pick your 164.
Two-story brick.
What?
Two-story brick. I've been dealing with this property since April, since the end of April, and, well, that's part of it, but it's not, it's not getting any better. And so I'm at a point now where I've tried going through, you know, taking him to court. He's come to court, he made a promise, he didn't follow through.
Is that the one right behind the Dr. Urquhart house?
No, it's three doors down, four doors down.
That's a wrought iron fence.
Yeah. Two-story brick.
Okay.
Yeah, they got bags of trash just sitting out in the yard.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, go for it.
So that's, those are the only two additional things that I have.
I have a question, about a new structure on Washington Street?
For, it's a shed, a two-story shed. They received permission from the Heritage Commission, and they pulled buildings from it up.
Okay. It almost looks like a house.
Yeah, it's a two-story shed.
Yeah, just curious. It's going to be quite sturdy, though, it looks like.
Oh, yeah.
They're doing a good job.
Anything else? Thank you.
Public comments? How are you going to take this to the Mets from the meeting on the 24th?
Okay. Talked to our last meeting about doing a consent agenda, where you make a motion to adopt the entire consent agenda without voting on the individual items. Correct. So Pam prepared this consent agenda kind of with that in mind, but unfortunately, she put this resolution on the Delta Regional Authority in there, a grant, which probably should not have been a consent item. So.
What's the minute?
You know, I would like you to vote on that separately. But other than that, you could approve the consent agenda without that resolution and have one vote that would cover each of these items.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda, striking a resolution 2017-29 to that agenda and voting on that later.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed?
So would that be the next thing, sir?
The next order of business is a whole business, which there is none, and now we got a new business, and this resolution.
So it should have been on the meeting. I see, thank you.
And I didn't catch it before she headed for the shores, so I just left it there.
Next.
This resolution is authorizing us to apply for a grant to the Delta Regional Authority for, it's called a creative placemaking investment program, and they make money available to do things to encourage development of arts and humanities, particularly in downtown areas. So this would be a $20,000 grant. You recall that Sandra had a visioning session several months ago, a couple of months ago, I guess, and the top priority of that group was trying to find a way where the hospitality workers and the shop owners become knowledgeable about what you do in St. Genevieve when you visit here, and kind of become agents of, instead of having them, you know, somebody stops and fills their gas tank and asks a question, and the person who's taking the money doesn't know anything about what's here, or where it is, or what to do. So this would be putting together a module, modular training program that could be used over and over again. The Foundation for the Restoration of St. Genevieve has agreed to be a sponsor as the 501(c)(3). The university extension service would be a partner in providing training, training materials. They have things that they can, they can provide. And then we would do some original content work, videos and educational materials for administration for this program, that we would do a couple of times a year forever for new employees. And that's that, it's about a $20,000 project. I haven't done the grant yet, so I don't know the budget, exact budget. And we would be matching, we get $10,000 from Delta Regional, and we would match with in-kind, and maybe, maybe some cash for buying materials and things.
Can we tell them about like the roads and cases and places like that?
Yes, and like the downtown shop owners.
Well, yeah, but I mean, it's, you're talking about getting gas, well, that's where they got the gas out here.
I think our weakest area is the commercial enterprises, you know, on the highway. I think most of the downtown merchants are pretty savvy about what goes on, but this would be available for new employees, you know. It's not, I'd rather fix a road, but they don't, they don't give me money for that, so.
Yeah.
So we got to read the resolution. Wait, we read it?
So who, who would be implementing the program? Sandra?
Yeah, she'd be administering it going forward. I'm going to write the grant, because she's had her hands full between now and the 23rd.
Read the resolution.
Resolution 2017-29, a resolution of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri stating intent to apply for a grant through the Delta Regional Authority for a creative placemaking investment program grant in an amount of $20,000.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes. Well, we approved all of this.
Consent agenda.
That was all the licenses, street closing.
Street closing licenses.
Everything's approved.
That's good.
So that takes us to Oregon. So that takes us to ordinance number forty-one seventy-one.
An ordinance amending access three sixty-five, stopping, standing, apartment restricted or prohibited on certain streets by amending section three sixty-five point zero eight zero and adopting section three six five point zero nine zero. Section three six five point zero eight zero, parking and/or storage of oversized trucks, trailers or other vehicles on city streets. Section three sixty-five point zero ninety, recreational vehicle parking permits, first reading.
So we're gonna allow recreational vehicles?
Well, not, well.
That, we had a question about the motor home that was parked on Westwood Drive. That brought up the question of if someone doesn't have the room to park their motor home or their RV in their driveway or on their personal property, if they could, um, park it on the street. And one of the things that was brought up was maybe requiring a permit for those special instances, but we wanted to make sure that the street was wide enough to still be able to maintain two ways of traffic beyond the, the vehicle parked there. And so this is what we have in front of you.
So it asks that they come in to get a permit, we go out and inspect the site.
To make sure.
And make sure that it's wide enough and straight enough.
That there's a line of sight so there's no safety issues.
And, and those things would stay anyways because those are part of our, our ordinance anyways.
So there are really a handful of places in the city where you could do that.
Where you would even be able to.
Right, right.
That's why I'm wondering, you know, it's, what I want to get into is an argument with, well, I got this boat and it's, it's, you know, and we had problems with this before. I get it with a motor home, it's a big piece of equipment and it's tough.
Didn't, didn't the board, I think right before I came on the board, just pass an ordinance not allowing trucks and.
Yes.
Yeah, I think big trailers and things.
That was part of it.
This was another intended consequence of that.
Right, because of having a motor home that couldn't, that wouldn't fit in someone's, in someone's driveway. And so it, and it's been parked there for years, although we haven't been parked there seemingly since our last.
Fifty-one now, it's a sale.
Is it? Okay.
Not, not to influence your decision here, but there's, one thought process is if you don't have room for it.
Right.
Don't buy it.
Well, that's my thing.
Or stored in a storage facility.
Yeah, that's, that's where, yeah.
That's where it belongs.
Yeah. That's up to you guys, but I'm, I'm not bored, I'm.
And you have to think of the safety issues of rescue equipment, be able to get through.
It's another problem.
That's another. Another big thing.
Nope, this is here because that was brought up, so.
So the one up on Market Street, what would have been your assessment?
We would have, I, I don't know. We would have had to, just to measure, to make sure that there was enough room from the end of the vehicle on the street side, or from the side of the vehicle on the street side to the curb on the, on the opposing side, as well as making sure that there was enough room from the stop sign back, you know, so that.
But you had mentioned parking at their driveway, I mean, why did, why did they have to park in their driveway?
Well, in their driveway or if they had a, a gravel area, I mean.
Yeah, you can park, big trailers, you got, you can park them back up in your, in your driveways.
Right.
Have you off the street.
Always wondered why that was there, because there was plenty of yard there to park them in.
You're not gonna get a motion for who won, is it?
Okay.
Okay.
Not hearing a motion, we're moving on.
Moving on.
That brings us to bill number forty-one seventy-two.
An ordinance amending chapter five hundred, building and building regulations, article two, building code, section five hundred point one one zero codes, section five hundred point one one zero codes, section five hundred point one nine zero, construction permits, section five hundred point one nine zero, construction permits. First reading.
It was, yeah, it was different. Different subsections.
Oh.
In there is what it is.
Oh, that says subsection.
In the front seat there.
Okay.
So this, again, last month was, this is about fences, so.
So it looks like, um, what we're doing is removing the height restriction.
So in the, in the two thousand and twelve building code, it does not require a permit for a fence that is under seven feet tall. So we would be removing that section, you know, from the building code and then revising it with, you know, all fences.
Every fence will now require.
Will now require a permit.
And our.
And every fence will now require approval.
Structural integrity, even though we're seven feet tall, but for materials, in every case.
Right.
So, for example, in my backyard, I've got these fences, they're iron panels and there's little stakes and you stick them down in between little rings on each one and it's like yay tall. So in order to put, and it's just stuck in the ground. So in order to install something like that on my property, I would need a permit?
I mean, yeah, I mean, yes, probably so. It's.
Seems a temporary fence, so wouldn't it?
I mean, it's a temporary.
I could pull it out in, in a minute and a half if I had to out in my backyard, but yeah, it's not a permanent structure, but this doesn't say permanent.
This is in the spots, it's some.
Ten.
Yeah.
It's just, it's just first reading.
Yeah, this is just the first thing to.
Two concerns I have here is under section G, you know, where you talk, uh, first paragraph, permitted material, uh, no more than two types of related fencing material. Now, my definition of material is the items that go into that fence. I don't know that we should limit to two types of material going into that fence. Moreover, two types of fencing, you know, where they have a, a section going down and there'd be four different types of, you know, one might be a dog ear, one might be chain link fence. You know, I think that needs to be corrected and then on paragraph two, uh, chain link fence with slats. I don't, I don't go for that at all and stuff because that's more than a privacy fence and.
And this, and this again was just, you know, this is just a draft that was. So removing the chain link with slats?
Like the razor bars, okay.
So, again, what would you like to see on the, on the two types of.
Instead of no more than two types of related fencing materials, you would like to see no more than two styles of fence?
Yes.
That would be like big ones.
Right. Yeah, because in a typical PVC fence, there can be four different types of material.
And that wouldn't be tinted, obviously, if it was.
Right.
Keep you from doing wood, chain link, vinyl.
Right.
Right. Because I'd like to see, Mary, do you slide a fence in fence?
Yeah, and I guess I'd like to have permanent in there somewhere as opposed to.
So that would.
So say, there are fence materials and designs.
Probably under section three, install a fence on any property, a permanent fence on any property. Is that where that? Mark, would you?
I'm sorry.
No, I was asking, Mark, if he, if you would have.
We'd have to define.
What would, what a permanent.
I don't know why, well, I guess it'd be up to the, the board whether you want to allow temporary fencing.
Yeah.
Under what circumstances?
My backyard has temporary fencing.
How is it done there?
Parts of it have been there, others I took a couple of pieces out the other day and moved them.
So, yeah, so, I mean, you would have to define what you mean by temporary.
So is, is, is a fence that is.
Temporary, I think of as the, as like this orange raft construction.
Construction fence.
Temporary fence, you're gonna have it up for a period of time to complete a project and then it's gonna be gone. If it's gonna be, I mean, that's, that's how I would define it, uh, in the ordinance. I'm not saying you should do one way or the other, you can do whatever you want. But if you, if you're gonna have allowance for a temporary fence, we have to define what that means and for how long. And if, and, and, uh, if you don't define it, then everybody's just, you know, somebody's put some chicken wire out there and said, well, it's just temporary. Let's send it for three years, you know?
But they don't actually require some temporary fence on new construction sites?
We're worried about some temporary fencing for like private control for special fencing stuff.
Well, I, I, I think we're. Obviously, temporary fencing, I mean, the, the, the question, I think is being raised here is could I go buy fence posts, drive them into the ground? And they, they, they aren't set in concrete? And stretch some, some wire on it?
Yeah, well, it's, I mean, it's thicker than that.
And would that be considered permanent because it's not? You know, it's easily removed, even though I have no intention of ever removing it.
Or take those to the ground, separating, you know, I mean, that could probably.
Recall that the goal here is to come up with a standard that keeps people from taking bed springs and, and.
Right.
You know, barn doors and whatever and creating an enclosure with it.
So how did we come about that?
I think if, I'm.
We can strike a couple of things through here, but.
Where you say materials intended to be used as fencing.
Mm-hmm.
Well, that was kind of, it, it, kind of Mark's point is if you say that, you gotta define it. And that's what Carla was attempting to do. What materials count?
Fencing material. I would suspect that the guy on Ice Street thinks he's, he's got fencing material.
Yeah.
Mayor, what are we gonna do here?
Well, we're gonna get this right. We're having some problems here, so. Martin's gonna go back to the drawing board, he's gonna get hold of Mark and we're gonna get this right.
I'll bring it back.
Mark, it's not a legal issue.
Well, it's not a legal, you have to tell us what you want us to do. You have to craft it, uh, yeah, yeah. If you want, if you want, if you don't want to regulate it, we don't do it. If you want to have exemptions for temporary fencing.
I want to regulate it, too.
Yeah, I mean, we just, we would need some guidance. I would, I don't know what.
Does anybody want to regulate fencing besides me?
We, we want, we, we need to, I, I agree with you, absolutely.
And this stuff, but John showed me it's not fencing, it's a little stick in the ground wire thing.
Yeah, it needs to go.
Yeah.
That's because he's cheap. It's beautiful. Well, yeah, it's beautiful. It's decorative.
Right.
Yeah. And what's it keeping out or keeping in? The roof raft.
It's just a board.
Chicken tractor's totally the same. Yeah, you know, it's, yeah, it's yay tall. It's, you know.
Keep it over the roof or anything?
Yeah, and in.
Well, I, I think it's still gonna be subject to whether or not it needs to be permitted.
Right, yeah, that's, I mean, if.
And I, and I don't know that it needs to be.
I don't take that.
That would be, that would be her call.
Exactly, cancel.
So I think we leave it in there.
Well, in that case, you can't go by, lay on and buy this little Exodus stuff that people put around, you know.
That's, you don't want to make this too complicated.
Right.
Or overly restrictive.
Exactly. But at the same time, like you said, you don't want people making a lot of old mattress box springs and whatever else they got.
Yeah, but that can be.
It's been done in St. Genevieve.
Your neighbors are gonna be watching what you got. And that's kind of the issue that we're trying to take care of now. And it's, well, we got Eric's guys too, they're, if they see something, they're, they're gonna maybe bring it to the.
But how do you work, or?
Yeah. But if it's a problem, have we checked other like-sized municipalities for their fencing ordinance?
This is kind of where this came from. This is kind of where this came from, yeah. Pulled a few different ones together and.
Well, let's get this done the right way. Right, Mayor?
That's right, we're gonna do it the right way. Bring it back.
All right. Instead of sitting around thinking about it, Carla and I will put our heads together and come back with a revised proposal.
Good idea.
You guys need help.
Good idea, good idea.
That brings us to bill number forty-one seventy-four.
An ordinance amending the St. Genevieve Code of Ordinance, Chapter three forty, miscellaneous driving rules, section three forty point two fifty, operations of a UTV vehicle as set forth below, first reading.
So, just when you think you've thought of everything and you adopt an ordinance, you discover you didn't think of everything. So this is a, a housekeeping proposal to revise this to, 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 to address a couple of issues. So we're gonna issue stickers and it says where you gotta put the sticker on your UTV. We had, we had that you're, in order to get a license, a permit, you had to be twenty-one years of age. We left that. Uh, and had to have a valid Missouri driver's license. And a guy who lives in Illinois says, I have a group and we love coming to St. Genevieve, but we can't come now because we don't have Missouri driver's licenses. So this would honor other states' driver's licenses. And, um, there was a question about using the UTV on city property, uh, in parks. That was ambiguous as to whether or not they could drive on the streets of the city that go through a park. So this revision makes it clear that we're saying you can't take your UTV off-road in, on, on, on city property. And, and then. And then we, we, we decided to leave the, the, the full class F Missouri driver's license for the operators, which ensures that they're eighteen. But again, the question had, what if I, what if I'm from Illinois? So I put, or it's equivalent issued by another state.
Motion, Mr. Mayor? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Did you please do it twice since we already have people?
I got a question about that. Are these being, are these being, Eric, are these being inspected just like the golf cart?
No.
Okay, I didn't think so, but I was, they're just coming in and getting permits, I mean, changing permits.
So wait, so you don't know if they have turn signals or anything, that we're not expecting anything?
Right. That's right.
Well, I thought we were inspecting.
That's what I thought, that's what I saw.
Uh, we, we talked about the, uh, the administrative end of that, the, the, the hassle. My understanding was there was not going to be an inspection process that if they are violating any.
You have an obligation to abide by the rules and if you don't, you get a ticket.
Is there a rule that says they have to have turn signals?
Yeah, well, no, only if they're gonna operate at night.
Didn't, did we limit the hours of operation?
Not, not turn signals.
I thought we were, they were gonna be inspected just like the golf cart.
I did too. I did too.
The, the, again, this was before.
What did your inspection of the golf cart consist of, Eric?
At that time, we were restricting UTVs. We were trying to keep the high fire thing off the street.
Right, right, but I'm saying.
So we were, we were limiting the speed. We were making sure that they were governed correctly, that they had not been altered and go forty miles an hour or something because of the lightweight frame, trying to avoid a catastrophic collision with a vehicle. Checking to make sure the brakes were sufficient, that they would stop within a certain amount of time. Those are all things that we could probably revisit now on the golf cart end if, if we wanted to do that. Not that that's been wildly successful, but, uh, again, we, the, the concern with these initially was they are capable of doing eighty miles an hour. So it was my understanding or my memory that, that we discussed that it would be regulated the same as any other motor vehicle that can do a hundred and twenty miles an hour as long as they're.
They still have to follow the traffic.
Exactly, they have speedometers and that's where a golf cart does not have a speedometer. And then was the purpose in, in trying to regulate that.
Well, with that logic, why wouldn't you have blinkers on these things?
Because you can use hand signals. Hand signals are, are a recognized method during the day and, and, again, the, the intent on the golf cart, if you're operating it at night and could not see the hand signals, then you would need some type of.
Okay.
Equipment that would.
I've been telling people they need blinkers.
Yeah.
Again, I think, just like the golf. Again, I think, just like the golf cart, only if it's-
I say, I witnessed, I was up there on the corner Saturday, and I witnessed a lady coming down 61, wanting to make a left onto, onto Parket, and was scared to death and got off to the right because she had a pile of cars in behind her, nobody knew what she was doing.
Yeah.
No blinker on the thing or nothing, she was coming inside. And I, and it was just-
And we can, we can certainly require that, I mean, that's not-
And I've had some people in the last week express concern about the noise that these things make. But we already have a noise ordinance, right?
Correct.
So, I mean, if it's too loud, if one of you guys hears it-
If it's excessive, then we will-
They can get a citation.
That's correct.
Okay.
Didn't, didn't we limit the hours of operation for the UTVs?
I don't think so.
You don't think so?
If you're operating them after sunset, they've gotta be equipped for-
Yeah, lights. With lights, okay.
These things are a hell of a lot quieter than three Harley-Davids going down.
I know, I'll just repeat what was said to be.
Yeah, yeah.
Motion for a second reading?
There we go, moving on.
Second. Roll call vote?
Alderman Gremminger?
Yes.
Alderman Mooney?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
This is the second reading, right, no, this was just to bring out the second reading.
Just to bring out the second.
Oh, okay, that's okay, Mayor.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry about that.
Thank you, Mayor, you know, we need your second reading.
An ordinance amending the St. Genevieve Code of Ordinance, Chapter 340, miscellaneous driving rules, Section 340.250, operation of a UTV vehicle as set forth below, second reading.
Move through, second. Now, we have a roll call vote.
Alderman Gremminger?
Yes.
Alderman Mooney?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
Uh, yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Rozeka?
Yes.
We have eight yes votes. Vote number 4174 now becomes ordinance 4105.
Thank you very much. Brings us on to bill number 4175.
An ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Boulder Creek Performance K9 LLC of St. James, Missouri, for the purchase of a K9 dog and an amount not to exceed $14,000, first reading.
Motion for a further-
No, yeah, go ahead, take a vote, I have a statement to make.
Second.
Second.
Um, Mark reviewed this contract and made three comments. He requested one change that the vendor agreed to. He requested a change that would provide for, in the case of litigation, the prevailing, the prevailing party paying the legal expenses, or not prevailing party.
Receiving, yeah, prevailing party would get-
Receiving the legal, the legal expenses. So, you know, but, and, and he didn't want to make that change. And the other thing he pointed out is that this company is registered in South Carolina, or West Virginia, I forget where, but has not registered as a entity in the state of Missouri. And that creates questions in his mind as to if there is a legal problem, whether they can be sued by us. So, maybe you ought to explain that.
Yeah, I mean, the, the first change is just really theoretical, they had, this phone here-
The dog's name was different or something.
The dog's name was different. They had the second, they'll, it's a very basic contract. And when I, when I see something like this, this is basically a smaller expenditure, I mean, of course, I'd prefer like a four-page document that has all the bells and whistles. But for something like this, his agreement was, was acceptable. I just always like to have a provision in there if we have to sue them, especially for a relatively small amount. If there's a dispute and we win, I want them to pay the attorney's fees and costs. If we lose, then, then we're gonna have to pay the attorney's fees and costs to them and vice versa, you know. So, because otherwise, if they breach the agreements, and they give us a dog, a dog, you know, issues with a dog and isn't really properly trained for what, what its intended purpose is, you know, you have to make a decision whether you want to bother suing them because you're not gonna be able to get your attorney's fees. It's gonna cost several thousand dollars in attorney's fees to try to recruit this. That's, that's one issue. But that's, I've had, you know, it's discretionary whether you want to go for it, it's a relatively smaller amount, the risk is pretty low, it's, this is not a $200,000 purchase. But I always want that in there. And then if the other side doesn't agree to that, it, for me, it's a red flag. I mean, why wouldn't you want to stand by your product if you're not comfortable saying, well, if you sue me, I'm gonna win? So, I, you know, as a seller, I would want it in. Because we can write a contract that says if we win, we get attorney's fees and costs.
So, they-
But it doesn't protect them. They don't want that in there, which, which is odd to me. I've, I've never had a party that can remember in public entities or private leases, where you have it, the winner gets attorney's fees and costs, not agree to it. Because it protects them as much as it protects us. Because when we sue them and they win, then we owe them attorney's fees. So, that's, that's unusual. And the second thing is that they are, properly registered as a South Carolina company, but they have an office here in Missouri. So, and they have a location in St. James, Missouri. And so they have to register as a foreign company with the Secretary of State's office. Because that's how we serve them if we have to have litigation. So, that's just another thing that, that's a, that's an issue if, 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 if there's a problem with this agreement.
And they didn't have-
They're not registered at all in the state of Missouri, but they are registered in South Carolina.
Now, if they didn't have a Missouri location, you wouldn't have this concern?
I wouldn't have that concern at all because they'd be properly registered to do business in the state of Missouri.
No. If they only had a South Carolina facility-
Oh, yes, that's correct. If they were, if they were, just had a South Carolina location, they don't have to register in the state of Missouri. They, you know, you can do business across state lines. But because they have, they have a location here evidently, they're supposed to do that. And to me, it just, it shows kind of a lack of basic corporate attitude, you know, if, if this is a, but I don't, I don't know this group, it could be great. It's relatively small amount, but I'm not doing my job if I don't tell you those concerns.
Is this the only, only game in town?
It's not in the town, it's kind of in the country, but-
I was speaking colloquially.
No, but the other option is grossly more expensive.
Chief, is this the same company that the K9 officer has previously worked with extensively?
Yes. We've not gotten a dog from this company before, but he has done some training with this company and seems satisfied with them. There are other options, one in Pennsylvania, one in Indiana, I believe, that are, that are training facilities and kennels that provide the dogs. So, you know, certainly, we want to do what's on the up and up. We don't want to, we don't want to get the city in any unnecessary trouble. I mean, I don't have any indication to believe that, that this is not going to go as we hope it's going to go. But I certainly understand the concerns and, you know, we need to research that further, we can look into that. We have bid some other animals, comparable animals, again, from the Indiana and the Pennsylvania facility. But like Martin said, you know, there is some, certainly some added expense additionally with, with our travel expenses and sending the officer to receive the certifications that they need to receive.
Is this company multiple locations or is this just the one in South Carolina?
I, I believe it's based out of South Carolina, and this, this particular handler and trainer lives in St. James, and, and that's where we would take delivery of the dog.
But I mean, they have other locations throughout the country or?
Just South Carolina, I believe they're based in South Carolina.
And just so you know, I'm not, I'm not, like, sometimes you'll, in the future, you may hear me saying, don't do it. Don't do it, I'll be a lawyer, yeah, listen to me. I'm not jumping up and down about this thing. But I'll let you know, there's, there's issues, especially the attorney's fees thing, just kind of, kind of surprised me. I've never had anybody say, well, yeah, that, that sounds great, you know. Because like I said, it protects them as much as it protects-
Would you want to revisit that portion with them and see if they changed their mind about that or not?
I certainly can. I mean, I haven't had any direct communication with them. Martin gave me the proposed agreement, I've sent a email back to him saying this is, you know, because I didn't want to spend a whole lot of time with it because it's not a huge contract. And I just suggested that minor change in the one that edit for the name of the dog on one of the paragraphs. And then I, I always, I'm an initiative, after a bad experience with a different public entity that didn't run this through, we had somebody do work for us, and it was a defunct corporation, and it was a big mess. And so, I always run it through the Secretary of State's office because you'd be surprised how many people are doing business and they, they call themselves something and they don't actually exist. And then you're suing an individual and it's, it's a problem.
How big of a deal is it to register as a business, say in Missouri?
Especially as a foreign company, you just gotta fill out formally, do it online.
$25.
Yeah, it's, it's five months and 25 bucks. So, that's, that's a weird thing that you would want to do.
Chief, where did we get the dog?
It was, it was off-circuits knowledge dog when he gave me it. He had the dog and, and had performed the training and, and gotten certifications on his own. Brought that with him and hired him.
I think we ought to try another shot at it, but at that same time, if, if the other dogs are that much more, and the expenses would be that much more, and they're the only other options, then even if it went bad, you're not, I mean, what are you, what do you have?
This, you know, this is unique. And again, I've not, I've not bought a dog since I've been the administrator. This individual has worked closely with our K9 handler, he sends him videos just about every day over the training process. They're taking the dog out to malls and letting it visit with people, just random people, showing us interactions with other animals, make sure it's not animal or whatever, things like that. So, I mean, they're, they're keeping us in the loop. And, you know, my, my gut tells me that it's probably on the up and up. But I certainly understand the concerns and, and I wasn't comfortable with reaching back out to him and explaining the concerns that we have and, and make sure that it's something that everybody's comfortable with.
Why don't we take this for the next meeting?
You're asking for $14,000.
Somebody make that motion.
We made a motion already to accept it.
Okay.
So, we need to let this die out. Did we have a second motion?
Oh, we could do the first reading and leave it stand till the next meeting, leave the first reading stand.
Well, we had, uh, can we do that? We've already had two motions to-
We just had a motion to do for the-
First reading.
First, first reading.
Yeah.
We can turn down the second one. The ordinance would need to be changed.
We had a session already.
Because you're just authorizing and entering into the contract, so the ordinance is fine.
Right.
If this guy's willing to-
The only, only other thing is it's 40, it's 14,500 instead of 14,000.
That's what I was gonna say, there's two different numbers on there and stuff, one's 14,000.
Yeah, I think it was, yeah, ordinance itself. So, would, would you guys be comfortable doing the first reading and then be contacting him and try to get him registered with the state for the second reading? Would that be sufficient?
Yeah, because that way we don't have to do the second reading. At the same time, I'd also like to have Mark check, our officer, and see if, to try to figure out if we can get that in there where they can pay some of the problem or pay it their fault.
If we do the fourth.
We should all get in contact with that.
Yeah, or Mark, I don't know how we do.
Yeah, either way.
Okay.
I'm cheaper.
Yeah, that's right.
Sometimes you're not so effective.
Yeah, well, that's a good point.
Good on Mayor.
Without anybody that's gonna threaten him, like, I'm gonna recommend that this-
Yeah.
So, our officer, our officer has visited with this particular dog.
He has trained with him.
Well, no, we've not, we've not actually seen the dog. They're actually moving it here this week, actually yesterday we get it. So, we're scheduled for next week to actually see the dog and work with the dog. So, but he was coming from South Carolina.
So, they're asking for full payment on signing of the contract, you know, no partial then?
Well, and again, I mean, every, you know, across the state or across the country, operate that way, you pay for that dog and then you do the training.
You're, you're leaving with the asset.
Right.
Who's George?
Is there a guarantee for this thing to live so many months or years and whatever? Nothing like that.
I, I don't know how you can guarantee that.
Well, I'm just guaranteeing no.
I think there was a guarantee.
There's health-
I can't even, you know, I didn't.
I didn't.
There's stipulations about what not to-
Right.
Our people aren't aware.
Keep driving.
Gee, I'm surprised that's the fact that, so.
I thought that was pretty high end.
For this dog.
We don't have to have-
That's what he was, that's what he was just saying.
That's not to be dreamed of.
What do you, what do you think?
There, there's, it's not that you can't say, feed the dog food, there's specific food that they recommend that he had.
But they don't give you a whole lot of detail, it just says a good diet.
Yeah. Well, we're, we're preparing filet mignon.
Do you like one day?
Oh, we got a, we got a first and a second. We have a motion, a first and a second for this first reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.